All right. All right, we're going to call this meeting to order, whatever time it is. And we'll first have a roll call, please.
Kernan?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Stutzman?
Here.
Horan? Butler?
Here.
Junkie?
Here.
Rooney? Connect?
Okay, we have a quorum, so we're ready to go. First of all, we have the agenda up here and also in your packets. So please take a look at that. Is there any changes or anything that we need to note? Anything good? Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Voice vote fine? Okay. I think we're good. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Approved. Now we have minutes from June 6th in your packet. Anybody have any items to amend or talk about? We're good? Or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Agenda approved. Right, going through it here. Now, we have a very short period here, a little period here for public comment for anything that's not on the agenda. We will get to the cases shortly. Could be any general comment you'd like to make to the historic preservation board, any comments from the public other than what's on the agenda. All right, then we will move on to regular business. But before we do that, we're going to have a brief introduction. There's some new staff.
Thank you so much, Ms. Stutzman, this evening. I'm pleased to introduce you both, introduce you all to two new staff members we have here in community development. First is Michelle Hammond. She is your secretary and arrectician. And then sitting over there is Camille Kipers. She's our city planner and will be presenting actually both cases tonight, so she's jumped right in. We're pleased to have them both, and so thank you so much.
Okay, so with that, we will begin our regular case with HPB 22-03, 1112 Miller Place. It's a certificate of design review, and we will have first presentation from staff.
So, good evening, board members. Thank you for coming here tonight. Our first case on the agenda is a request for a rear addition onto an existing residential home within the 8th and 9th Street Historic District. So this is a site plan of the proposed addition. What is shaded in here is the addition, and then not shaded in is the existing. The subject property for this request is 1112 Miller Place, just west of Illinois. The property is zoned R3 and is within the transition form zone district. The application is proposing an addition that would meet the requirements of the side drive couple house form type, which is allowed within that form zone district. The primary use of the property currently is residential, as is the use of all of the adjacent properties. The applicant wishes to build an addition onto the rear of the existing home that would improve a new attached garage with room above for a new primary bedroom and bath, as well as extending the usable space on the existing second level. Finally, the front porch will also be renovated as a part of this project. The Jefferson County Assessors records show that the existing home was constructed in 1939 on Lot 5 of Block 1 of the Barber's First Edition subdivision plot. Sorry, First Edition subdivision plot. The structure is considered non-contributing, and I was unable to find a historic survey on file for this property. The existing home is approximately 860 square feet, not including the basement. The applicant is proposing an addition of 620 conditioned square feet of space and 340 non-conditioned square feet for an attached garage. This would be a front view of the proposed addition, so you can see... This is a porch expansion, but generally the front facade of the building won't be changing and will be staying the same with the original flagstone exterior. And then the addition is going to be entirely in the rear of the property, so you won't really see much of it from the front facade. This is side elevation that shows some of the proposed colors and materials that will be used, which I can't get entirely through this view right here. So this application has been reviewed by staff and found that the proposed style of architecture is consistent with other structures in the area and within the 8th and 9th Street Historic District with the use of vertical board and batten siding and also an organic color palette. The specific review criteria, including streetscapes, site standards, massing, building variety, roof form standards, window standards, materials, and paint color have been reviewed and are provided in the packet, so you can see how the proposed meets the design criteria and matches the existing neighborhood. The proposed addition has minimal visual impacts. As we saw, it will be contained entirely in the rear of the existing house, with the exception of the front porch renovation. Staff has reviewed the guideline criteria against the application and found that the criteria are met and believes that the addition located at 1112 Miller Place should be approved for a certificate of appropriateness. This concludes staff's presentation for this request. I will be available for questions, and the owners of the property are also available for questions.
Okay. I have a question. So this is a non-contributing structure?
Correct.
And so that means our role at this point, but it's not contributing to the historic district. So the certificate of design review is our thing here, and it's just an advisory, right? We can just comment?
Correct.
But there's no yea or nay or anything going on here?
That's right.
I just want to be clear. Okay.
Well, just as a point of clarification, at one point you did say that changes are only in the rear of the house, but there is a front facade change.
Sorry, direct with the exception of the front porch renovation.
Other questions for staff here?
Do... Sometimes for something to be considered a contributing structure, it's because it had to have undergone a historic survey.
Yes.
Not all properties have had that opportunity to go through a historic survey. This is a 1939 house, you said? Right?
Yes.
If it were to have gone through a historic survey, would we have probably classified it as a contributing structure, given its age?
I'm unsure. So in the contributing structure map for the 8th and 9th Street District, it doesn't show as a historic structure, but again, it could be because the survey hasn't been done and was not able to find one. I'm not sure if a survey was... Yeah.
Yeah, so we have, this is, we have some structures like this in our historic districts. They're not mapped, and they're not, they're within the boundary, but they're not, we don't have a survey and they're not mapped, so we don't know. It's a question mark. So it's one of those things where perhaps at some point, we could go back and do a survey on it, but at that, because it's silent, we just can assume it's a non-contributing structure, since we don't know. But it's within the boundary, so it would be within your purview to have at least an advisory role on that addition.
And is there currently an existing garage that's detached?
I'll let you guys speak, that didn't look like there was one.
So there is, there's no garage associated with the property at the moment?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a, so a tree grew through a center block.
Okay.
Shack that they had in the backyard, but it was unannounced, so it came out.
I have a question for staff. On the site map, there's a block of land that backs up to 58. Is that a separate parcel?
So this form type that they submitted an application for is what's called a side drive couple house, which would actually allow them to subdivide the lot and into one larger lot, which the existing structure would be on, and one smaller lot, on which they could build a smaller primary structure. And so I think that is the future plan, would be to subdivide, and then there would be two lots, so...
This sheet for, for here, that's sheet AS 101.
Yeah, so that would be a newly created lot as a part of that subdivision, which then would allow for a new structure to be built on that lot.
So that's a planning and zoning thing, and has that occurred? Or it's just by right?
It hasn't occurred yet, no.
It's by right, or they'll have to go to planning commission for that, or is it by right?
So it's by right in that form, in the form type that they're proposing in this form zone district. So it would be used by right, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this time? Would the applicant or the representative like to make a presentation to add on to anything that staff presented? And you need to come up, come up to a microphone, please, and give us just your name up at the podium. And just give us your name and where you're from.
Yeah, Ryan and Rachel Evans were the owners of the property. We own the property next door, and we live next door. So a little bit of history about the house. 1939, as you had asked. It's on Miller Place, named after the Miller family. And they built, was there five homes in a row? Four homes in a row, I think, that the Miller family all built? And it starts with this one and goes west, so all of those were built by the Millers. The Miller family still owns the one that's two to the west of this proposed property here. So it's a dead-end street, and it's just kind of a neat area. And so when we bought a few years back next door to it, we always said, we didn't want to see this house go away. It's so unique, it's all stone, it's 1939, it's got a lot of really unique aspects to it. And so we just said, if it ever came for sale, we would buy it and do our best to preserve it. And so that's, here we are. We bought it about a year ago and went through the zoning changes and everything through the moratorium, and we've just worked hard, really hard to preserve the actual structure and then bring it up to code so that it's usable, and add the attachment onto the back so that we can get some square footage and make financial sense of the whole deal. But really, our goal was to make sure it didn't get bought by a developer and scraped, which we understood it could, because it wasn't a contributing structure, and we just didn't want to see it go down that path. So that's why we're here today, to see what we can do to make it stay part of this Golden Community.
And the idea is with ADU, that's a rental unit, right?
Yeah, it depends. It would be divisible, and it could be sold, so depending, but our goal is to keep it. Yeah, we want to keep the property.
Oh, it could be sold as a separate because of the new zoning regulation. That's why, yeah, because typically in the past, before the new zoning, there was the ADU lottery.
Right.
That's all gone, because now with the zoning, we don't even need to call it an ADU. It's technically apartment number two.
Correct. It's its own lot, its own address, yeah. Yeah, but yeah, our intention is to keep that.
I have a question. What's the square footage of the existing stone house, and then what's the residential square footage of the new structure?
You read off some numbers, I think it's...
I couldn't quite hear them.
Yeah, so the existing is 860 square feet minus, not including the basement level. And then the addition is approximately 620 square feet of conditioned space, and then 340 square feet for the new proposed garage.
Yeah, the garage is a, kind of an oversized one.
So another 600 additional feet of new habitable space?
Yeah, living space.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant here at this time? Okay, you may sit down. We may have a question answered, but thank you for coming forward. At this point, we open up to public comment on this, and anyone who came to comment on this case, welcome to come on up. Any comments? Well, that's easy. Hearing none, we're going to close public comment. And now we have a chance for the board to discuss this with more of ourselves. We can redirect questions to staff or to the applicant if we need to. But any preliminary thoughts on this project, or do you want to say about it?
Yeah, well, two things come to mind. We see a lot of projects in Golden where massing is a concern. But where massing is a concern, and they say, well, you know, in this case, an 860 square foot house, almost doubling. But in this case, a lot of that is a garage, and a place where a typical property in this area would have had a garage in the back. And a lot of that massing is that garage, so it's not as much massing as we typically see when we just think about the living area that's being added. And it is a very small house to start with. So it's not like we're seeing these situations where you're going from a 2,000 square foot house to a 4,000 square foot house. So even though the massing ratios are big, it's not as concerning. The other one is about the porch. We are seeing a front facade, which we typically don't like to see in historic preservation. But the existing porch walkway, it doesn't seem to me as something that's as important. We've had other properties come before us where we have a truly historic porch that's getting demolished for a bigger porch. Here, you're just actually making a porch. That's impressive. There is no real porch at the moment, right? It's just of a walking...
Cut her over the entrance.
Right, it's not a true...
It's a stoop.
It's not, we don't see the stone siding that we see being used in some sort of typical architectural style of Golden to hold up pillars or anything like that. So overall, I think it's good. I'm a fan of ADU units in this area as well, more living space, so...
I have a slight concern about massing too, just increasing it much, but on page two of three rendering, to kind of answer some of my questions about the massing, it really is from the street, gonna be, hard to see back there. You look at how it's, it's just taking that roof line up. And the porch, I kind of like how it's going to appear new, but you're going to still see the stone. You're going to see it's a little stone house.
Yeah.
And this is so different than some cases we've had where we had maybe almost doubling, and it just swallowed the historic building. This is not swallowing it.
No.
Which is good.
Yeah.
So I'm...
The material in the addition is different from the existing material. I think that's a good thing, too. Really distinguishes the generation of construction between one and the other. You don't want to fake match in historic buildings.
I agree with that.
Is there any changes happening to the windows?
Yes, the original windows on the house stay, but we're, the openings stay, but we're updating them to meet the energy code.
Yeah.
We are changing, and they don't need egress requirements.
Right.
So the original window openings that you see are, they remain.
Okay, yeah.
They'll just be modernized, and they'll be dark, and we're trying to make them look up there.
Yeah, great.
We need an egress, and we need a fresh facade. So you can, you know, you can see them, it matches on both sides, but, you know, this one will become an egress dugout, larger, you know, to access the basement, as we used to do, but all of those stay relatively the same.
Any thoughts?
I think they've done a really great job. I think the porch is going to add to it.
Kathy? I agree, but I just, when I was reviewing it last week, I really appreciated how the new addition, proposed addition, is so well proportioned with the existing home. Really did a good job.
Francine, do you have anything to add?
Sounds good to me.
I'm ready to entertain a motion here.
Okay. So in the matter of case HPB 22-03, a request for a certificate of appropriateness, certificate of design review and finding of compatibility for the proposed home addition located on 1112 Miller Place, I move that the historic preservation board adopt the findings, recommendations, and conditions found in the attached motion number HPB 22-03 for approval.
Second.
Okay, we've had it moved and seconded. Any further discussion needed for any thoughts of amendments or conditions or anything? Okay. So we have no recommendations for changes, which is basically what we're asked, if we're going to make any advisory recommendations, which we do not have. Do you think it's a good project? So I'll take a vote on that, and I think it's a voice vote at this time. So we'll go down the line if we do roll.
Kernan?
Yeah, in favor?
Murphy?
Aye.
Stutzman?
Aye.
Horan? Or is it Butler?
Approved.
And then Junkie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you for bringing us a good project. And we'll move on.
Okay.
Now we will just go ahead and move right into HPB 22-06, 1815 East Street. This is again a certificate of design review on non-contributing structure. So this is, we have advisory actions here, but it's not an up or down thing. Okay? So with that, we'll have a staff presentation on that, please.
Hello again. So the second case here on the agenda tonight is a request for another rear addition onto an existing residential home, this time within the East Street Historic District. So the subject property for this request is 1815 East Street. It's located between 18th and 9th Street, 19th Street along East Street. This property is zoned R1A and is within the peripheral form zone district. The addition of the, sorry, the addition the applicant is proposing meets the requirements of the side drive house form type, which is allowed in the peripheral form zone district. The primary use of this property currently is residential, as is the use of all of the surrounding properties adjacent. The applicant wishes to build an addition onto the rear of the existing home and renovate the front porch as well. The rear addition will include a garage expansion, allowing two more garage parking spaces, as well as approximately 700 square feet of additional accessory dwelling living space. This is a vicinity map, also with some photos of the surrounding properties for context. The Jefferson County Assessors records show that the existing home was built in 1940 on Lot 7A and 8A of Block L of the Kenny's, Kenny's addition to the Golden subdivision plot. The structure is considered non-contributing per the East Street Historic District contributing map. There is a historic survey, but the survey does not clarify the structure, sorry, the construction as contributing, therefore, I believe it's considered non-contributing. This is that survey, if you guys want to take a look. This application has been reviewed by staff who found that the proposed style of architecture is consistent with the character of other structures in the surrounding neighborhood, and generally in the East Street Historic District. This can be seen with the proposal, the proposing to continue the brick exterior and wrapping it around the first level of the addition, and then the horizontal siding on the second level with shingle accent siding in the pitches. The specific review criteria, including its streetscapes, site standards, massing, building variety, roof form standards, window standards, materials, and paint colors have been reviewed and provided in the case packet, so you can see how the proposed meets the design criteria and matches the existing neighborhoods. The proposed will have minimal visual impact, as the entire addition, with the exception of the front porch renovation, is confined to the rear of the property. Also, just put up, this is the material board for the proposed project. And this concludes staff's presentation, so I'm available for questions, as is the applicant. Sorry, I'm rewinding. After staff reviewed the guideline and criteria against the application, staff believes that the proposed addition at 1815 East Street should be approved for a certificate of appropriateness. That concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, questions for staff at this time?
So the street view is East Street?
That's correct.
Does, is this, in this house, the alley that goes parallel to it, is that a dead-end alley?
I believe it is a dead-end alley.
It is a dead-end alley?
Yeah. And that's also how access is gained to the property, to the alley.
Yeah.
This appears to be pretty tucked in there. I mean, it's been pretty straightforward ADU. I mean, it's pretty well hidden behind the main structure, and it's well within the, it's got the square footage that meets the planning guidelines.
I don't know if this is a question for staff or for the applicant, but the material for the addition is also going to be brick. Matching brick can be a little difficult. Is it going to be the exact same brick? Is that still available?
I've had this discussion with all my neighbors in the alley about 3 hours ago.
Why don't we just go ahead, why don't we go ahead and just take a break and ask for...
Yeah, you can see where that comes up.
We should have the applicant come forward, just introduce yourself, and if you'd like to say a few before, then we'll have our questions for you.
Hi, Michelle, I'm Josh Coombs.
Okay.
I purchased the home a little over a year ago. I've just been waiting for the rezoning to go forward with this. I purchased it from Mary Jane Hale. I don't know if anybody knows, but she lived there, I think, about 30 years. The interior of the home's fairly pristine, and she took great care of it. It's, we didn't talk about, it's about 850 or 900 square feet up. There's a basement with non, with non-egress windows. I think total square footage would be about 1,800 square feet with both. So what a plan to do with this structure would be, the bedrooms are very small and upstairs, so there's an addition of a larger main bedroom upstairs, and then a small living area with a kitchen. And so the stairway can be, just close the door, and it could turn the upstairs into an ADU essentially. I figured it'd be a good investment, being closer to being just a few blocks from lines, and that was the, that's the intended use of it, I think, for the ADU when I'm not there. Yeah, as far as the, so, pretty close with all my neighbors, and we've had a lot of discussions just about appearance of the home and what they want to see from it. They, as far as, they're happy with the setbacks from the alley and the setbacks from the rear, and how that looks with their, just in terms of, actually, the other homes on the alley are right up against the alley right away and the rear property lines. They were done quite a while ago, so they're happy with just the amount of setback that we're giving it, and allows for, it doesn't feel like it's going to be a vertical on either side of the alley, but... But yeah, the main discussion we were having, they're happy with the roof lines and the conform, I believe everybody is, at least the people I've talked to. But we've had some discussion about the materials. And yeah, matching brick is a, my rear neighbor, Mike, is a, was a mason and did a lot of, he's very involved in the industry, so I want to make it match, but I'm not going to make it, if it doesn't match, I don't want to make it look like it doesn't match, so that's the, that's the idea. If I can't match the brick, I'd like to, we'll probably reattack that later. But what they wanted to see from it, I guess, was, and their concern, we'd like, a couple of them, there's several artists on the block, they want to see, they'd really love to see some sort of a metal, or like a rusted metal, or something to make it a little more edgy, I guess you could say, or, and I haven't explored that with my architect. This is, I mean, this is the plan right now, but I'd definitely open to constructions from y'all on what you think is, would be the best, the best way. I was interested to see what you guys use on building materials as well, with corrugated metal. corrugated metal. But this was the plan right now, was to try to make, try to tie that, try to tie that in as much as possible with the existing brick and make it not look like a, just a attached, completely different structure. So, trying to, trying to have some common design elements there, but definitely open to suggestions.
I would just show out that there's no, usually no single answer, and there's diversity of ideas, as you've found out.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's this general kind of line to walk in the accessory standards of, especially since you can't completely match, and it's a completely new thing, is to not try to fool somebody into thinking it's the same brick.
Right.
So, you can go from probably a spectrum of something that's maybe the, maybe the same color, but maybe a different size, you know? So, it won't stand out like a sore thumb, but it'll be new, that's one right of go. And another is, you know, some, look for some other materials, you know, maybe, and the stuff that's really brutal and totally different is a little bit bleak to pick something that's so alien, it looks like it was just plopped in. So, this whole gradation, but something that you can find that echoes some things about the existing structure without going totally looking like a spaceship, so matching color or texture, or something like that.
Right.
So, maybe not try, but not trying to exactly put that brick there, because that wasn't there.
And within the same secretary interior standards, something that can be done is what, for example, is going to happen in the Astor House. That's, what was the word we kept using? A soft connect, soft bridge, or something like that, where you might have a small transition between the original building and the new building. This goes for both. It's a little hard when you're doing a two-story thing, though. That typically applies more when you've got a very distinct structure, with a very distinct structure being connected. They'll do like a glass hallway or something.
Just a little band or something.
But in, in both these cases, with the situation of it kind of stepping up over a garage, it's a little harder to, to do that transition piece between the historic and the model.
Right, and that's, and that's, that's where it got complicated, because the, we're using the, in the new, in the, the new zoning, we're using the existing architectural, or the existing structure piece in tying them both in, so it's not, not a detached portion.
A separate.
So, it, to, in order to comply with the zoning, we need to, because initially, it makes it a lot harder, to tell you the truth.
Yeah.
And we're, so with the existing garage that's there, to leave that facade in place on the alley, it's, there's all sorts of engineering requirements to do that, that we, I mean, my preference was to, to tear it down, to tell you the truth. There's not much, I, I like, it's, it's, it's like an extremely small garage, and it's more of a shop, really. So, I, I mean, I guess that's what I would have preferred to do, but in order to comply with the zoning, we needed to leave it in place.
Leave the garage in place. Yeah.
And the addition is how many square feet?
Approximately 700, I believe.
That's being added to the first story, about 900, 1,800 with both.
But 700 is the allowable ADU size?
So, if it's attached, I believe it's allowed to be up to the same square footage as the existing structure, is that right?
Has to be smaller with.
Yeah, so it can't be larger than the existing structure.
Could be the same or smaller.
The roof line is quite a bit higher than the other one, but at the same time, you've got that slope, it's kind of, you've got that slope, it's going up a hill over there as well, right?
That's correct. It goes with the alley.
I've been in this house, actually.
Over there?
Yeah, yeah. The wood paneling inside is beautiful, like around the doors.
Yeah, all the varnish and, I've tried to maintain that, which is kind of challenging, too.
It's a nice backyard. This is going to be covering where the vegetable garden is.
That's true.
Sort of a fenced-off vegetable.
Yeah, the vegetable garden isn't there anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Coombs this time?
Yeah, I've had this, I've talked to the neighbors, though, about just the height of the structure and so forth, and I think we're, we're on the same page with it. Their main concern is just that I'm not like looking over their, their backyard, so.
I guess, one question is, it was kind of the thought process for the oversized garage to create enough of a first-story foundation for a reasonably-sized ADU on top of it?
I'm sorry, can I say that one more time?
Was kind of one of the ideas of why the garage is so big, is because then that gives you enough square footage for the upstairs ADU to be like a reasonably-sized ADU?
Right.
Does that make, does that question make sense?
Yeah, the bedroom is upstairs from the existing garage, with that small little walkout deck there.
So, even though, let's say theoretically, a garage that big, it's a big garage, but it's because it gives you the square footage upstairs.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be, exactly, it needs to be.
It needs to be a big garage, so that you can have a reasonably-sized ADU.
Right. Or else, or else we're having to move farther to the alley, or move farther, basically taking away the backyard. We want to leave the backyard in place. That's the, that's the idea. I didn't want it to be any larger than the 700 that we're doing. I didn't want it to be up to the, the size of the house, I just wanted it to be as much of a complimentary structure as possible.
If I may, for an ADU, there's also a requirement that there needs to be two parking spaces for the existing structure and one space for the accessory dwelling unit. So, this garage allows there to be three designated parking spaces on site.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, we may come back to you.
Yeah.
I'm going to open up to public comment at this time. Has anyone come here to talk about this case that would like to come forward? Public comment is open. All right, then we're going to close public comment, open it up to discussion among ourselves.
It's interesting to see two very similar projects on the, on the same night. A lot of similarities with the idea of changing a front porch and adding to the back. Again, the front porch, in this case, how contributing do we think it is to the historic facade, right?
Yeah, can you, do you have a picture of the existing house anywhere?
It's another situation where it seems to be more of a stoop, a walk-up stoop, as opposed to a true historic.
Collection of photos, it's just a cover of the stoop.
Trying to zoom in on that porch. So, yeah, I worked with the applicant before Camille came along on this front porch extensively, and it's, it's not seemingly original to the house. It's a later addition.
That's good to know.
It's kind of a traditional metal awning porch from the 1950s, and the porch, the house was built in 1940, so it didn't seem like it was important to actually, yeah, to the house, and it's not in good shape either.
That's kind of, you can also.
Yeah, you can see a little there, there. It's not really original to the house, and it doesn't, it's not in good shape either. So, the, I work with the applicant's architect to come up with the proposal, which is a more substantial front porch that sort of matches the pitch of the roof and the style of the house, which is a sort of minimal, traditional. It's like about, I would say it's about like 65% minimal, traditional, and, you know, 35% bungalow-y. So, it's sort of a, it's a, got a little more from the father than the mother, but, you know, that's the kind of house it is.
Do you have something that? No, I don't have any questions.
I think it's another situation of, of the massing may be big, but the original house, it was not that large, and so.
It's too, it's too.
They're too small, yeah.
This makes it more useful.
Yeah. I like that it's an ADU, again, that it's a situation to provide more housing in an area that's walking distance from mine. The matching of the materials is a challenge. I saw something similar happen, I used to live on 21st Street between Jackson and Ford, and there's two brick, single-story brick houses facing each other, and my neighbor, I lived in one, across the street with my neighbor, he managed to find the same brick as his house, which was built in a similar time. So, if that's a route to go, that's okay. I'm just thinking about, you know, how to make it so that you can tell this is an addition to a historic building as opposed to the original.
One, one idea is perhaps maybe changing the mortar color slightly, so the mortar is a little bit slightly different color, so you can still, so you can see the differentiation about.
Yeah, and I know that's what the standards say to make it different, but then at the same time, maybe this is one case where the standard isn't following, and you do just give, if you can match it exactly.
It's different enough, yeah. I like, it should be a little different, I think.
Yeah.
Materials, I like that the form is similar, and that's the form of the porch. I think similarly, the porch should be just a little different material that just distinguishes a little bit.
Or the pattern.
Or the pattern, right.
The pattern could be a little different.
Like with the Astor House, they came up with a white material, but they, they were just going to use a different.
Like a hair and bone.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit different. Where they were going to try to make it look like the old stone.
Yeah. But yeah.
So, that, my only thing would be putting some recommendations to try to walk this line of, make it distinct somehow a little bit, so you're not trying to fool people that it's historic, but you don't have to make it look like an alien spaceship to make that differentiation, you know? Do something subtle. That's, that would be great.
I should ask, what was the process for, I guess, for, if we didn't do the brick, if it turned out that the brick is impossible?
And, and like, what does that mean as far as like coming back or something like that?
Oh, I don't, I don't think you need, you don't think you have to with what this is.
I don't think you'd have to come back, actually. This is.
But again, I'd maybe at least pick a material that's got a compatible color, don't, you know, something different. It could be a, maybe it's, maybe it's a woodboard and bat vertical, I don't know, something else that you draw from the general neighborhood historic buildings that's kind of going to fit with the form nicely and not, it could be something clean and different, but I wouldn't go with stainless steel perforated something that's, you know.
And I think it's great that you.
They were talking about edgy, but I wouldn't go super.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
And if it's done a good job with it and across the street, like, floating, maybe they have that.
But you don't need to come back if you don't do the brick, you know? It could, you don't need to come back if you choose not to do brick. It could be, you could just draw from some siding that just, just visually looks similar. It could be new material, clean material, but yeah, some, and color, you could just do something that was a nice tan color that was, or kind of very, very subtle. This isn't going to paint it barn red or something, you know?
If it was a contributing structure, then yes.
Yeah.
And that's sort of the issue, that we have some of these properties without, in its historic districts, that are the right age to be historic. We don't have them with this contributing structure classification.
Yeah, so this, this category, we're an advisory.
Probably should have them in contributing structure, but we don't.
And I just want to say, I compliment you on, I mean, we haven't had other, I mean, I haven't heard all your neighbors, but they didn't show up with pitchforks or anything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I, but the, the process is good, that's the best way to go about these things, is talk to people around you, you know?
Have them send a letter. Most people don't go through this more than once.
Yeah.
We go through it every month, but it always helps to have people send letters saying, I'm a neighbor and I support it.
Little letters, a board, a quick email saying, hey, I live next to this guy, it's okay, but you're good. But that's good that you've been talking to your neighbors, that's terrific.
Francine, thoughts?
You want a motion?
Motion?
Okay.
In the matter of case HPB 2206, a request for certificate of appropriateness, certificate of design review, and a finding of compatibility for the proposed home addition located at 1815 East Street, I move that the Historic Preservation Board adopt the findings, recommendations, and conditions found in the attached motion number HPB 2206 for approval.
Second?
Second? Not, do we, I, I just thought maybe we just attach a little statement about just refining your search for the materials a little bit more and find something that's going to look a little different, clear and new, but not radically different, just walk that line. Work with architects and your neighbors. That would be my only finding to add.
Do we really need that?
Oh, I don't know, do we need that? Or is that just part of the discussion? Is that just getting recorded?
That's just per the motion, so.
All right, okay. We don't have to do that.
It's for discussion.
All right.
I think, catch the second, who was the second?
Hi, Dan.
It was crazy.
Okay, then I guess we are, any further discussion, ready for a vote? Let's put this to a vote. All in favor, roll call vote, please? I'm sorry, not all in favor, but do a roll call vote, please.
Kernan?
Yep, in favor?
Murphy?
Aye.
Studson?
Yes.
Butler?
Aye.
Jonkey?
Aye.
Okay, motion. Thank you for coming tonight. Another, another good thinking in the project.
It's a nice house on the inside.
Thank you. So, that's our regular business now. As part of the public meeting, our election officers, too, our formal is not a study session or something.
Yeah.
Okay, we will just roll right into that. So, we've been putting this off, it's time, we need a chair and a vice chair.
So, if you guys want to stick around, you're welcome to.
Yeah, you guys can stay, or we just have to pick guys.
You guys didn't even need to stick around after yours, but I'm glad you did, otherwise we're just talking to ourselves.
Thanks for coming.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Well, since I've been around, this has been a very informal process of just all, you know, soliciting interest. You know, as you can see, we've at least met enough times now that the new people can kind of see what the chair does. It's just facilitating primarily, keeping this thing on track and following little things and banging that gavel with sheer power is just. So, sometimes it's just a matter of, we sometimes just sort of, who's interested, who's, and we'll just.
And take nominations.
I haven't met everybody yet. I've been gone for quite a while. I haven't met you.
Francine.
What's your name?
Francine.
Francine, pleased to meet you, Linda Murphy.
Happy to meet you, Linda.
Kathy? Yes, Kathy, hi Kathy, hi.
And Linda, you've been with Historic Preservation Board three, two years, three years?
Since 2020.
Yeah, so, on, yeah.
And then who's not here tonight? I mean, we could also tag somebody and say, hey, you weren't here.
Well, we have three members absent tonight. We have Mark Horan, Chelsea Rooney, and Sandra Knepp.
Okay. Sandra's been on a while, a little while, a little less, a little shorter than you, but she's been here a while.
She's been on about a year.
A year. And Mark has been here a couple of years, like Linda's here, and he's.
We have Linda, Mark, and Nico around the same time.
Right, so Nico also joined at the same time as Linda.
And I'll just throw in my two cents, it's probably good to have a chair that's been here at least a year, and then the vice chair could be anybody. It's, because you're, what the basic vice chair is, is when the chair's gone, you fill in, and it's a good learning curve, so.
So, I guess I'd be interested in either. I've been here, this is, I'm on my third year, about one year left after this, and I guess if there was ever a time to do it, it would make sense to do it now, because I've got this year and then the next left. So, happy to do either one of them. I, I don't have a preference, vice or, or chair.
Do you need a formal nomination?
Well, yeah, we should probably do it one at a time, we should probably do the chair. So, again, the chair probably should be someone who's been here.
And I'm looking your way.
I don't know.
And I'm looking your way.
And I know that Mark would be great, but he's kind of like, does, he's said at some other meetings that he'd kind of rather not, he's kind of done that kind of thing before, been there, done that.
He, Mark has been our chair until now.
He's been in interim, he's been running, yeah, he's been just taking the gavel for, I mean, he's very capable.
Oh, you're right, right, Mark hasn't been the.
He's not been chair.
Yeah, yeah. Has he expressed interest?
No, what I'm saying is, he's kind of said, if I had to, I would, but he's, he's kind of been like, I've done this kind of thing, I'd rather be a member, and actually, quite honestly, being just a member, you get to do more of the discussion, because sometimes you get busy running things and you don't get to put in your two cents, but anyway. So, we could take a nomination. And then our only other, Sandra, has been here a while, big candidate again.
Has she expressed interest in either one?
I haven't heard any interest from her expressly, but she does have four years left on the, she was reappointed, she had a one-year term, but she was finishing, so she's just reappointed for a four-year term, so she's got some time about.
Well, for chair, I would like to nominate Nico, because he's, except for the recent poor attendance, has been very good, very attentive, and I think it would make a very good chair, so I would like to nominate Nico.
A second.
Second?
Can we go to the second?
Yeah. It's one of my best names.
So, I'm going to go with that. We're going to vote on, Nico is the chair, so I'm going to take a vote on that. Can we just do, aye, just raise your hands, aye?
Sure.
All right, congratulations. Does he get to take the gavel for?
He gets to take the gavel to find us a vice chair. Find us a vice chair, Mr. Chair, congratulations.
My first act is chair. My first act as chair. So, from people who have recently joined, any interest in being vice chair, you've had a couple of meetings, third meeting now?
Not at this time, I'd rather.
Francine, you've had experience, I think, leading meetings before.
I have, indeed, yes.
Yeah, would you be interested, vice chairmanship?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll nominate, seeing that there isn't anybody else.
Gosh, let's look at that and see.
Francine, you're going to do, it's a very competitive.
I see that.
So I'll nominate, I'll nominate Francine for vice chairmanship.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Cool.
You're off the hook, maybe not next year, you have one year left.
I've got to stop traveling, that's.
Okay, well, let's go just to vote, ayes for Francine, okay?
Yes, thank you for your willingness.
Thank you, thank you, congratulations.
Then we've got staff updates.
Nothing, nothing much from staff, we are kind of working through our moratorium backlog right now, so we do have some more applications that will be coming your way in the next few months, there are, we've been, some folks we've been working with for a while, so we do plan to have a busy rest of the summer, and speaking of that, every year, our September meeting falls on Labor Day, so we have two choices, we can discuss it at our, at our next meeting, but we can either cancel our September meeting, or try and reschedule it, so just kind of put it in your, just think about it, and we can decide at our August first meeting, which is two weeks away, which, which we'd like to do.
Well, we've got a big backlog, we probably shouldn't cancel it.
If we reschedule.
But we do need five people for quorum, so if a lot of people are traveling, we'll want to make sure.
Right, if we, if we do reschedule, we could, this night, this, the second Thursday of the month, the, the other board that meets this night is very amiable to switching and giving us this room, so it may be this September, I don't know what date it would be, but we could, we could discuss it at our next meeting.
September eighth?
Can I just break up one thing, there's this sort of perennial problem, I realize there's a lot of boards and commissions, and there's only so many nights of the week, and there's only so much space, but Mondays are really losing proposition, because there's so many Monday holidays, I mean, there's just so many, fall on Monday, so I don't know if it's possible over time to get a different time and place.
Yes.
Overtime.
We could, that's something we could discuss.
Might think about that.
Yeah, we should think about that, it is.
We just get so many, we get, you know, Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Labor, they're all Monday holidays, and so they're always hard.
Right, we do, I know that the other board that meets on Monday nights, the mid-month Monday, they get Presidents' Day, Martin Luther King Day, they get, they also have some struggles, so I know that it's not just you, it's the other Monday board.
And I realize that these rooms are, these are very heavily.
They are, this room is very.
Just a thought, overtime.
Absolutely.
Well, how about we just all make a note of, maybe the meeting would be changed to Thursday, September eighth?
I think it would be the following week, it would be the fifteenth.
Okay, Thursday, September fifteenth.
Right.
And then we can just make sure that by the next meeting, we've all verified if that would work for us.
Is that the first or second Thursday?
So that would end up being the third Thursday.
Is it? I'll have to, I'll have to check the calendar and see when the, what, because you all need to meet in this room, and that's.
Oh, right, the recording issues, yeah, that's true, we have to use the system and everything, so that's.
So that's, that's the struggle, but I'll, I'll come to the August meeting with some options, hopefully.
Okay, yeah, okay, because it already sounds like there might be a conflict for that day, so we, yeah, if we have like three days to pick from, then we'll just pick.
Yeah, there, it may be one or two.
Okay.
Well, congratulations to our new chair and vice chair.
Yay.
That's all staff updates. Nico, the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Aye, oh, second, ayes, yes, adjourn.